...in accordance with Policy 213. And have we had anyone requesting to talk at the public forum?
No.
So if we haven't, I won't read all that policy, but I guess we know that it is open to the public, the meetings. So that's properly noted. And so we go to item C is to look over the agenda and approve the agenda. So first we'll ask if anybody has any questions or discussion before we put it up for a vote.
I move to approve the agenda.
Seconded by Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So the next item we have is the discussion items. And I have asked Joe if I missed to approve anything. Vote on it and he's going to tell me since Al isn't here.
Okay, I have a couple of things and then we have a presentation. We just, we had the Rachel's Challenge, it's called Chain Reaction here last Thursday and Friday. We had 29 community members and six teachers along with approximately 200 kids, 100 each day. So we did high school one day and middle school the second day. Jade was there one day. It was a lot of, it's, it's an emotional day. It's, it's physical and running around and being happy. And then you go down and you're real serious and then you're physical again. And it was from nine in the morning till three. And you didn't, they didn't let you leave for lunch. I mean, we fed them, but you didn't get to leave for lunch. So I, we've gotten pretty positive comments, but it was a, it was a very positively draining day, I guess you could call it. It's National Principal Month, so we want to say thank you to Casey, Bill, Jeff, Anne, and Anthony. Because thank you for all that you do and we appreciate your work. And then one other thing, we had the Prevent Child Abuse Iowa, Shelby County's Prevent Child Abuse Iowa, brought in something called the Lisa Project. And it's basically a poverty simulation. So we had it on a professional development day. And teachers and paraprofessionals, anyone actually who works for the school, we encourage them to go through it. So it's a simulation where you walk through and it's about 12 to 15 minutes long, but you go through different rooms and you experience kind of hear and smell what poverty tastes like, smells like, feels like. And then when they were done, there was a We Can exhibit. So the We Can, so you understand what poverty is and then what can we do about it? And there were different activities that you can do in your classroom or just out in the community. And it wasn't just school. We had it set up at the elementary school, but all different people from the community could go through it. And I know there were several from Mertu, the hospital that went through it. We invited, we invited law enforcement, so some of them may have come through. But we just got the data that said 213 people went through it. And that's the most they've had, the most success they've had in Iowa. So that's kind of exciting. So that's, kudos to Prevent Child Abuse Iowa for bringing that into our community. Okay, now we have this, we want to talk about all of our STEM great things that are going on. So Sarah and Kylie are here. So if you guys want to go up there, I can put your presentation up or whatever you want to do.
Before they get started, just real briefly, we have, we applied for our STEM HD grant last year, planning grant. We met last week, wasn't it last week? With our 19 business partners. And we had all 19 businesses respond. We had four of them that couldn't make it that day. But it was very, very good dialogue that day. We had a lot of comments from them written down on paper afterwards. Lot of opportunities, I think, moving forward with internships, work-study and things like that. So just a kind of a renewal of some partnerships and kind of laid out our vision of what we wanted to see happen. We want to make sure our kids are getting college credit or certificates for their experiences that they're, they're going to have. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to the two rock stars.
All right, so we just wanted to give you a little bit of a STEM update. And I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Kylie Lewis. I'm actually getting married, so I'll be Kylie Come in November. But this is my 10th year in education. I have crossed the river and I've been in Nebraska for the last nine years. So I graduated from Wayne State College. And then I'm a NEDA Board member in Nebraska. So NEDA is the Nebraska Technology Association, very similar to ITech. And I'm a Google Certified Trainer. So just a little bit of my background. I was a business and computer science teacher in a rural district outside of Lincoln, Nebraska, for five years. And then the last four years, I've been an instructional coach outside of Omaha. So kind of seeing both sides of education with working with teachers and then also working with students. And both of them were in rural school districts. So very similar situation to what you guys have here at Harlan. And so far, so good. So I teach three classes right now. We have a coding and advanced coding and a STEM class. And so with our coding and advanced coding classes, our kids are focusing on programming and then just your basics that go along with computers. Networking, how does a computer run, what's internet, more than just what's Googling. So these are some of the photos from what we've been doing in class. We've done some problem solving, challenges, like building paper towers. We got out and did some networking. So the kids looked at in these two photos, what is a network? How does it work? And I got to be bad cop and come cut some networks. So then they had to figure out how to send messages if their network was down. And then it was really awesome that Mr. Poor took them on a tour of our own network in the school. So they could kind of see what it looks like for our district and how that's been running. On the other side of things, in STEM, we've been focusing on different units. So far, we've done some coding, we did 3D modeling. And we're moving into robotics right now. A lot of our focus is on problem solving and then getting involved with our businesses in town. So when we met with the 19 businesses, we're hoping to get tours going and different speakers coming so that kids can see the connection of what we're learning and how they can stay in Harlan and have jobs that go with those things that they really enjoy. So that's kind of our, our scope of what we're doing. These two kids made deer stands. The teachers at school voted on who made the best deer stand. So they started out making their dream room. They had to draw it out on graph paper and then convert it to 3D modeling. And then they got to make a project of their choice. One person made a spider for Halloween. And then these two competed against each other to who could make the best one. So their classmates could see, but they couldn't see their own. So they were like, oh my gosh, look at this cool feature. And they're trying to figure out what's going on. So that was really awesome to kind of see them in action. And now we're using our Vex robots that we had. The kids also used what's called a Makey Makey and they made circuits. So they made a piano out of a piece of paper using copper tape and lead. And so they could actually play the piano on the piece of paper that was connected to their device. So they got to see the programming side and then the hardware part that goes along with them. So each unit focuses on different things. Sarah and I are fortunate to go to ITech today. We didn't have any internet, but we still learned. And they had great sessions on STEM and VR and tons of great stuff that we can bring back to Harlan and share with our students. Now on the next page, we've also received some grants for robotics. We are starting a robotics team. And so with our funding from the grants that we've received, we have two years of funding for those kids to compete in first robotics. We've started by just kind of seeing who is interested in our win time. And now we have a good core group of kids that are ready to start out on the robotics. And we'll do some after-school and during win. And we'll also build it into our STEM class so that we can expose that to more kids. They'll compete in Cedar Falls in March. And so with the funding, we get all of our equipment, our entry fee for the robotics program. The kids will get a scenario in January. And then they'll go to the dome in Cedar Falls and compete against schools that have the same scenario. The nice thing about the program is it's featured so that the kids are learning. So it's not like cutthroat, we're trying to beat everybody else's robots. They can also learn from other programs so that they can build their knowledge as they move through from rookie to veteran status. So really great program. The person we're working with is great. Making sure we have mentor teams that will work with us too. So the kids aren't just going out cold turkey trying, trying their best. They're going to have the fundamentals that we're learning in the after-school sessions and then from the other teams that have already competed in the similar situations. And then our last one, if you've been following our social medias, we've started an influencer club at school. And so those kids are making content to tell our story here at Harlan. So if we're not telling our story, somebody else is. And so our kids have really jumped on and are excited to share what's going on. We are using a program called Class Intercom. And it's pushing the content out to all of our social medias. And so kids right now in a win time are signing up. I want to make the volleyball post, I want to make the football post, I want to do band. So we're appealing to all of our groups and making sure that content is getting sent out. We'll eventually have it across all platforms. But right now, we've started Instagram, Facebook and X or Twitter for each of these groups. So there's a page for all of those different brands, as they call it. And they've also started to help create the accolades that you guys see in the board minutes every time. So as you're checking out the social media posts, check out which students are creating those or tagging them at the bottom. If they choose, we're tagging them at the bottom of, of what they're creating. And as this progresses, we'll continue to build content. That's not just updating you when sports events are, notifications from the school, but more content of what we're seeing here in our halls at Harlan. So really great things that the kids are doing that's student-led within our district.
I've heard tons of good stuff on that so far. That's been excellent. I think that's something we were lacking, so.
Yeah. And the kids have enjoyed it. And you've seen from our stats of who's on there, where it's coming from, that it's continuing to grow. And it's hitting platforms that the kids like too. Like our Instagram is, all the kids are seeing their own content in there. Whereas they might not have had Facebook in the past, so they weren't getting that reach too. So yeah, they've enjoyed it.
Is the program aimed at a certain, like, high school or middle school? Is there any?
Right now, I, we're just at the high school, but there's works to get it built into some of the curriculum so that middle schoolers are also making their middle school content.
You mean to look at it, Jim?
What, yeah.
We can make your Facebook page.
What's that?
We can make your Facebook page.
I know.
What kind of programs do you use, actually?
Primarily, right now, we're using Canva. It's very, it's a user-friendly version of Photoshop. So the kids can drag and drop. Another nice feature is they already have like pre-made templates. So then the kids can change the colors on them, put our school logo on there. So wherever they're at in their journey of creating content, they can slowly build. We have kids that are making stuff from scratch too.
So it's really not computer programming?
No. Yep, more graphic design.
Yeah.
Yep.
So then the lens kind of from, as we kind of work back down, our lens then from the elementary is we have some STEM scale-up grants that we applied for last spring. So first grade got a couple of different opportunities that came to them. So they have some Storytime STEM packs. So that's being able to tie in STEM-related activities along with their literacy curriculum. So it'll be easy tie-ins to what they're doing with that. And then they also received some math fluency centers. So again, STEM-related activities in STEM or in the math program. So lots of opportunities to try to integrate those into the content area as opposed to making it seem like it's one more thing in their day that they have to do or have to get to. The big one that we got this last year was at third grade. It's valued at about an $8,000 STEM part. So there's all kinds of little gadgety things on there that they can put together. So that's the pictures on the upper right-hand corner there. You can see some of our students checking out all the different parts and pieces in with that STEM cart. The, the grow stand, so that was part of our STEM Best Grant that we got this last year with the HD grant. It's H should be HD grant, not HS grant on there. But that was a portion of the grant that we received this last year from the Iowa STEM program. And so the teachers could opt to get one of the grow stands in their classrooms. And so we just have finally gotten those put together this last couple of weeks. They got their plants in, their waters, their lights, all of those things are all turned on. So there's a couple of pictures there. You can see what we got going in action there. And then we're also trying to dovetail and try to get some opportunities where Kylie's classes at the high school can come down and work with our elementary students. It becomes a little harder in our schedule in the day at the elementary to integrate some of those things in. And so we've tapped and planned together a little bit how we can get some coding and programming in. And we're actually doing it this first opportunity within the library program. So there's a book title called Balloons Over Broadway, which gives the history or the story of how all of Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade balloons came to be. So a literacy tying in there within the library. And then we're going to use the little Ozobots that you see down there on the bottom. You can see then that kids can design and create their own balloon that they then can code and program. And that coding and programming is as simple as drawing with a marker on a piece of paper and integrating different colors throughout the sequence or throughout the path then tells and codes that little Ozobot robot to either go faster, go slower, turn left, turn right. So it gets the very basics of coding and programming down to elementary kids in a very, very easy to understand format for them. So looking at trying to integrate ways at the elementary program so that it can carry in through the middle school program. There's a teacher at the middle school that's got some STEM classes there as well, which then will flow on up into Kylie's program at the high school. So we're excited to try to get some more K-12 STEM opportunities out there for our students, so. So that's kind of leads to our on the horizon. So we are taking a visit next week. There's a bunch going to Opabogi to visit their program. It's called No Boundaries. Middle school program primarily, but they dip a little also into the high school. And so we have a few teachers going from the middle school. I think Kylie and myself are going. And just to kind of get ideas of what others are doing out there in the worlds of STEM, computer science and so on. Kylie mentioned too, we're going to be applying again for that STEM Best Grant. So we'll be looking at getting some more funding there for equipment, design classrooms that we could have as big opportunities there. And so that's on the horizon. We're working on that. And then continuing, Steve mentioned earlier that we had a meeting with our business partners. Last week at Iowa Western. So continuing to work and partner with our businesses in town. Opportunities for field trips or speakers to come into our classrooms to, to make that real-world connection to what we're doing with the fun activities that we're doing. Kids love them. Into how it could create a career path for them. And then again, looking to expand any opportunities at the elementary and middle school just to kind of keep up and build our program, so.
Yeah, makes me want to go back to school.
Right.
No.
I just want to say thank you to both you, both of you, because we, I mean, we, as you guys know, we couldn't, we struggled to find a STEM teacher last year. And now we have two wonderful people who are going to help us get back on track quickly. Because we, we were behind. And now we're, we're moving on the fast track. And the STEM Best Grant that we got last year was $60,000. So along with the probably about $10,000 that Kylie's just picked up this year, the $70,000 that we've been able to get in grants to just get in the hands of kids. So the STEM Best Grant, we get to apply again. This, that was a planning grant, so then we get to apply for more. So we will be doing that as well. But we, we just appreciate, and we appreciate Steve getting out there, getting the 19 businesses involved as well. So thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, so Facility Committee updates. You guys have in front of you just the issuance one, which is the auditorium, and issuance three, which is the elementary school. So those are the two things that we've started on. And then just some updates. So issuance one, we're, we're almost done with the auditorium. We don't have the curtains in yet. They are to come October 31st, or actually the 27th. And we hope to take occupancy the 31st. We are just waiting for the inspection based on the sprinkler system. So if things would have gone like they should have gone, like we wanted them to go with Phase Two starting, then the sprinkler system would have just aligned with our construction in the, in the high school at the same time. But since we had to delay the high school construction, there, we have to wait and get approval now, a temporary approval from the state park marshal. So that's about the only holdup. But afterwards, if you guys want to go see it, it's, it looks awesome. It looks done except for the curtains, really. Issuance three is the elementary. So Stephen's got some notes here. We're working on, we're working through slab coordination as we speak. And it could change based on the cold weather. We just have to wait and see how, how much nice weather we have before we can pour concrete. New changes on issuance three over the, no new changes in issuance three over the last month. And Nelson Electric is working with Travis Kreese and Jeff, who works for Nelson Electric. They're working together to try to figure out how the new buildings will connect. And I know they've asked, Sarah's not here, but Jeremy, poor our technology person, to see like where, where do things end and begin? So they can make sure they've got things lined up on the electricity side of stuff. And then issuance two is the high school. So we haven't obviously started there yet. Bids are due on the 26th of October. So then we will know more of what, what we're dealing with then. There's a pre-bid meeting tomorrow at 2:00. So that's if any of the contractors that want to bid can come in, ask questions, look around, dig deep if they want. Like if they, if they didn't see something on the plans, they can go wherever they need to go, on the roof and wherever they need to go to look.
So do you know if anybody's coming?
I don't, we never know. I mean, they just open that up and then whoever wants to come can come. And so.
He's had a lot of inquiries, so he expects it's going to be pretty good.
Yeah, so a lot of times they have it in the auditorium, because it's a little bit bigger. I'm not sure whoever's going to have it. It's probably in here. But if like, if a contractor that's already onsite in our other two projects is here, they may already know and may not come. That doesn't mean they're not interested in bidding. So it's a little bit of a litmus test of who's interested and then... But that is the bonus of having de novo, because Stephen Manus, I mean, he has made hundreds and hundreds of phone calls and they've gone back to him. So he has a really good idea of who's super interested and who's not. He does feel we will have better competitive bids this time because of the timeline. So fingers crossed. So I think, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. This is just the updates. And there are some bid, or some bills that we're paying for the issuance one and issuance three. They're starting to come in, so.
The bid letting in is the 26th.
26.
And anybody on the building committee or anybody that wants to come to the bid letting, sure welcome to.
It's open.
It's open to the public too, but it's great to come in and see, see the numbers. We're hoping for something under, what does it say? Eleven million?
Eleven million.
Cross our fingers this time, but we get bids.
So we'll actually hear the prices up and down.
Yeah, it's an interesting.
It's not that fun.
It's just interesting. You just, yeah.
Yeah, a lot more competition, right?
There'll be a lot more competition this time.
That's what we want. Holding up, huh? And you might notice here on this Phase One, we're 205,000 variance, 206,000 approximately. And on issuance three, we're 25,000 under. So anyway, that's manageable, I suspect, depending upon issuance two.
Which could have the most amount of variance.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So far, good.
And I might just ask this, pouring the slab, that's a huge deal before winter. So he's really just got his fingers crossed that the work gets done so they can start pouring the slab. Because they got to get all the conduit and underground work. There's just a lot of stuff before they pour. Because once they pour the slab, then a major, that's a major accomplishment.
Who cares what steel coordination?
Well, it's a steel structure. And so once they get that slab done, then they'll come in and they can do that through the winter probably, put up that steel. Boy, they're very efficient on that, I suspect.
So Stephen is, is hoping that the concrete can be poured now? Courtney, when we talked to her, who is the architect, the architect confirmed, she thought it would be later in the spring. So we'll see. I mean, maybe they're ahead of schedule, I'm not exactly sure, but.
About a week.
Yeah, a week.
And that'll make a huge difference on completion in these next weeks.
They're really making progress on the footings.
Yeah, if you go over there, you can actually see the outline of the building now.
I didn't know that. So the footings are.
Yep.
They're moving right on.
Student accolades, okay, we'll start. Jeff, are you first?
I'm not sure what's all up there in grade two.
Fifth grade PE, went to.
Oh yeah, the fishing trip. That's been a while ago. Yeah, Mr. Mosher, our physical education teacher. He takes a group of fifth graders every year out to Mishna Bend. The fish don't seem to cooperate as much as we would like them to. But it's amazing how many kids don't have an ever-fished. You wouldn't think that'd be the case, but it is pretty amazing. So the kids love it, get a great turnout. And you're kind of famous if you catch a fish. But that's a good day. Let's see, what else do we have up there?
Fifth grade students mixing two substances to identify a new one?
Yes, that was just in one of our science classes. One of the kids said they were making a bomb. They weren't, they weren't making a bomb, RJ.
Can't say bomb.
Can't say bomb. But it did fizz up and over, you know? So lots of hands-on stuff right there. That was in Mrs. Jones's class. And then I believe on the right.
Tea party.
The tea party, yes. So a lot of, like I think I said this last time at our board meeting last time, particularly with the new CKLA, there's lots of culminating activities for the kids that kind of bring everything together in the literacy into something tangible like this, where they do some kind of activity. So, which as you can see, also gets the adults very involved, so.
Middle school, though?
Yeah, there's a picture of our cross-country team. The boys and girls are kind of on that bottom portion. And that top one is, is just the girls' team. The girls' team this year plays first at every meet.
Wow.
And then they won the conference meet as well. So I know Mr. Clausen has a great thing going right now with his high school team. And there's a lot coming from the middle school as well. And just got good representation, you know, sometimes cross-country. At some schools might have four, five or six, you know, kids out for, for that sport. And we got good numbers both in the seventh and eighth grade. So good job to our girls' team there and the, and the boys competed as well also. There's a picture of the middle school student council float during homecoming week. And so Mrs. Casperhour is their sponsor. And so they kind of put a little float together. And next to underneath, one is just kind of some things going on in our middle school library. Some boys there. And Mrs. Schleimer's trying to dress up things for Halloween going on in there. So there were some boys doing some stuff and got their picture taken. And then that last picture is our, is some middle school as well as some high school student, student council kids that went over to Special Olympics and were volunteers and down in council blocks at the bowling alley there and volunteered their time to not just help our kids, but all kids that were participating there. not just help our kids, but all kids that were participating there. And so that was a good service project for them to go down. They do that every year and really learn a lot.
Thank you. Daisy?
At the high school, this was a pep rally we had at the beginning of the week. And it was just, homecoming was just a great week. I mean, I, we didn't have any behavior issues. The day, we had Fun Friday, no class and all activities, and it was just a really positive week, lots of new things and fun for all kids. So the goal was to have all kids involved in homecoming week in some way during the school day, too. So, and the bottom left is our king and queen. Sorry.
You're not ready.
I, I'm, I'm...
Shh. I tried to make it bigger.
And congrats to them. And then on the right, what is that?
Pie throwing?
It's a pie in the face. Yeah, I took a couple pies to the face that week. Yeah. I got two because I somehow missed last year's pie in the face, and so I didn't get a pie last year, so they made sure I won twice as much. And so, yeah, that was a fun activity. They donate, kids could buy popsicles, or put money in buckets, and then whoever had the most got the pie, and the money, I think, went to student council. This is our National Honor Society. There was NHS induction a couple weeks ago, so a really nice group of kids inducted into the NHS. And then last week, trying to remember all these names. Last week, we had the IJAG I&amp;I ceremony. I think it's induction and initiation ceremony. So these students, and then the picture on the right is, are all of the officers, part of our IJAG group there. Ms. Pila She's doing a great job. She started with three students at the beginning last year and is up to 40. She's almost, almost capped out with the numbers she should get, and it's just a great program with kids to help them find a future career, not just an occupation or a job, but a career, something that they're interested in, so...
The float was also excellent. It's one thing to hear about it, it's another thing to put faces with the program.
On who, what kids are in it? Yep.
Yep, so recognition of that. I thought the float was very well done, too.
Yeah, no, it is. It's a great program. We have IJAG, we have Avenue of Scholars. I just feel like we're, we're working the STEM grant, we're just doing a lot of things just to really, I think a goal is to always meet every student and meet their needs. So if you're college-ready, we want to be able to help you step into that right away. And if you're ready for a career right away, help you step into that, whatever it is. I think that's a goal that we're always working for, is, you know, if it's workforce, trade, whatever it is, be able to help a student at least find something they're good at that they want to continue to pursue. I think the biggest disclaimer I wish that they would all listen to when we say it is, you just have to find something to start with. It's not the job you're going to have for the rest of your life. So just start with something, and then you'll keep growing in that position, and you'll find, you know, you'll keep working from there. I think we can all attest to that. We know that as an adult, kids sometimes think when they pick a future job that they're choosing it for the rest of their life, so...
But one actually has baby up there, like on the float. And isn't that just a testimony of what that program is doing?
He didn't drop out, and he's gonna...
Yep, he'll keep going. Yep, yeah. And then, and IJAG, Avenue of Scholars, they all stick with the student for a year after high school, too. So just to keep, you know, it's not, you're not just dropped, you're, you know, they keep with you to make sure you're still supported and have any extra needs, so, yeah.
And then just from the district level, the counselors, and Anne Hightop and I presented in Iowa, at the Iowa BEST Conference, which is sponsored by the Iowa School for School-Based Mental Health, which Governor Reynolds gave, I think about $35 million to the University of Iowa to start a school-based mental health program there. So they're reaching out all over the state of Iowa. And so this is the third year they've had that. We've been able to present two years, but we just presented on all the things that the counselors do above and beyond within the classroom in our district. So it's kind of, is a great way to share what they do, and they do a lot of things that people don't see behind the scenes, so...
Was this the one that I got a letter from the...
Yes. Oh, no, that was a different one.
That was a different, okay.
Sorry. They weren't with me. I was back over there.
Okay, that, what was that meeting?
That was the school administrators' advisor.
Okay, so the school administrators of Iowa, the, I don't know, the administrator of it sent a really nice letter regarding Dr. Barnett, and she was very, very helpful in the meeting. Presented it to them, and they all took it very helpful. So I thought it was really nice. Nice letter.
And then that is like an old picture of the auditorium, so when you go in now, it has carpet and, actually, it doesn't have carpet there.
Can I point out one thing on this auditorium?
Yes.
You guys can, do you see on the walls where the gray stripes are? How it's red underneath? If you were to go and see, that was repainted.
Yeah.
So now it's grayed out. They didn't think the reds matched.
It looks a lot better.
And it looks way better. Just so you can like compare. If you go to look at it...
We looked at that, did you hear feedback from outside of the school about that? We looked at that after our music booster meeting the other day, and we're all like, why is that red?
Yeah.
Good job, glad someone else...
The color, the reds did not match the chairs, it was too bright.
Yeah, and it caught your eye right when you walked in.
Yep, yeah.
Well, one was gray already, so we were wondering if that's what it was.
Yeah, it is now, and it looks, it does look...
Bravo, excellent.
Yeah. And the stage isn't painted there, but now it is, so you'll, yeah. And then to the right, Steve, is that the 19...
Yeah.
Yeah. The businesses that Iowa Western, so, yeah. And you're gonna meet on a regular basis.
First Wednesday of every month.
Yeah, so, just to make sure we're filling their needs, too. Because it's not just about our kids, but it's about how we can help them in the community as well. Okay.
Very good. We got done with item D, discussion items. Now we are to E, action items, and we'll start with number one, personnel report. Catherine, do you have anything to tell us about?
No, not a lot to report. Our list is getting smaller and smaller and smaller, so it feels pretty good. Just, and actually, it's changed since last Friday. We've made a few more hires since then, so we are just trucking along, we're getting there.
Yes, I think we have a wrestling, actually, we have a women's wrestling coach, almost, almost ready to decide.
We've made an offer.
Yes.
In mostly coaching positions?
Yeah, yep.
And you, associates, so it's not the major teaching positions are all probably the hardest to fill sometimes, aren't they?
Yes, especially right now.
Thoughts or comments? I get a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
So moved by Joni in second.
Oh, second.
By Jade. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next we move on to item E2, which is the approval of the September pay apps for Harland issuance one. This is, issuance one is for the auditorium, and it's baiting construction in particular, and it's $330,231. And if you look at it, it's in red, and so this is just part of the main contract, the progress payment. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll take a motion to approve this pay app.
So moved.
So moved by Joe, second. Second from Mondi. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The third item here is the approval of the September pay app for Harland. Now, this is issuance three, which is the new construction going on over here. And this is the, I don't know if it's first draw, but it's a draw, a progress payment. And we have McCarthy Construction, and Bating Construction, and Precision Concrete, and Nelson, all of which totals $459,411. So that's the pay apps there. Anything more about that, Brian?
Yeah, the McCarthy is not the first draw, nor is it on baiting. On Precision, I believe it is.
So these are being paid on the different packages you call them in that issue, that's right.
Basically, they turn in pay apps, or de novo reviews them, and then they turn to us.
And the architects approve them, and both de novo and the architect, they sign off on them first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
He makes the motion in a second from...
Second.
Joni. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we have item four, the approval of the, it says here, Harland issuance one baiting change order number three. And this is for baiting and subs at $6,949. And I think Stephen discussed some of these items with us in the past.
He did.
So are there any questions or comments about these?
It's those three bullets there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, about the pipe, that the city wanted a certain pipe for one thing, I think.
The size, right? We had to go up in size.
I think a different type of pipe, was it?
The city used us just one pipe, and we had to go two up.
Of course they did.
And there's a missing breaker. It's bad, you're missing a brick, but I guess we're missing a breaker, I don't know if that's... Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got Jade making the motion.
Oh, second.
And Joe seconding. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next we have item five, approval of request for allowable growth for LEP, allowable costs of $18,994.93. That's a mouthful, Brian.
Sure is. This is something we do every year. This is similar to the SPED deficit, not quite as large. Essentially, what, we are given X number of dollars to fund our SPED program, and obviously, just like SPED, it's not enough. So what we do is, we code it a certain way in accounting system, and then what ends up happening is, after the fiscal year ends are all done, then they'll say, yep, yours qualified, so then you can go back and get that authority. Does not give us the cash back, it gives us the authority back.
LEP stands for Limited English Proficiency. So they're students with...
Thank you for clarifying that.
Who do not speak English, so, yep.
And it's something we'll probably always have.
And our population is growing. Anna Gill was in today, and we've gotten 11 new students with limited English proficiency this school year, so family of five.
The positive about that, Jenny, is our amount that they're gonna allow us for next year will be larger.
Right.
So that'll actually, hopefully, kind of work some of its way out.
Limited English profici...
Proficiency.
Good effort. Any other discussion you want to ask, anything you want to ask Brian, discuss about that?
We really don't have much choice, do we?
That's a good point, Jade. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Some moved by Mondi, second.
Second.
Got that from Joni. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. So the next item we have here is item six, the approval of the annual treasures report. I don't suspect this is very exciting either, Brian, but...
Oh, that's pretty, pretty exciting stuff here.
Jazz it up a little, Brian.
Jazz it up a little. Jazz it up a little, okay.
Even change the pitch of your voice slightly.
I can hand out papers, though.
All right. We're required by code every year after the audit, auditors have been here to present the annual treasure report. This is a very simple report. It shows the beginning balance, the revenues you took in, the expenditures, and then your ending balance. And Catherine said I could only talk for like three and a half minutes, so I'll give you a really abridged version. No, I'm kidding.
I said two, Brian.
Two minutes, okay. So really what I'll do is, I'll talk about the changes. In the general fund, there's slight decrease. That was anticipated, because obviously, we are still spending non-ressor funds that we received, so the balance did go down a little bit. That was well anticipated. We did go up in the student activity fund. What you'll really find there, that'll ebb and flow, depending on the timing of events, depending on when, when they get funding. It could be as simple as, the Booster Club made their payment to the, to the district in June versus July, so that'll ebb and flow, and that's not too unusual. The management fund, we did anticipate that was gonna drop a little farther than that, but we did have one less early retirement than we had budgeted for last year. And we, the insurance deductibles were actually lower than normal, so that actually, we held our own pretty good. The big one, you're gonna see a big increase on is, is the state, the SAVE fund. That was anticipated, because we do have, this is, we have two years here where we do not have a lot of debt load that is, that is being covered by the SAVE. So that was anticipated, and this does enable us to have the ability to have a little bit of, a little bit of cushion on, with construction and stuff. Again, that was anticipated. The Pebble was probably the biggest surprise. We, we actually, our expenditures were quite a bit less. There is a caveat, there would have normally been a bus that would have come out of there of 115,000, 20,000. Well, getting a bus is a lot easier than, it's a lot easier said than done. And actually, we ordered one in January of '22, and we got it Friday. So that normally would have come out of there. So although we did gain quite a bit, there, that will come out of there. But we actually, it did go up a lot more than, normally, we expected to basically hold its own. We had done a lot of preemptive work prior year, be it rough, be it some of the mechanical stuff, and we had a really, we'll knock on wood, we had a really good year as far as those type of repairs.
Doesn't the bond offset a great deal of that, a good...
And it will, and that's gonna make that better. But, but the other thing, what we'll do with Pebble, too, is, is we have like the chiller that is about five years away, and we'll be able to set some aside, some funds aside proactively for that. And that's really the plan, although the other thing, Jade, is, is buying vehicles/ buses is going to get a lot more costly. And what I mean a lot, there, I talked to Lewis Central, and Lewis Central had three buses that they had to replace. They were $185,000, so...
A piece?
So that's gonna be more costly, but the good news is, we're in good shape right now with that. The other capital projects fund, that's the construction fund. What that signifies is that the first round of bond proceeds is the revenues, and then the 3.89 million is what we have spent of that to this point. The debt service fund, that is really a conduit where funds go in there, and then funds come out of there. We will, starting this year, we will have a debt service, so there will be funds coming out of there to start paying the levy, or the bond payments that are gonna start accruing. Enterprise funds, that is the nutrition fund, and it's all because of the food service director, mine up, right? No, okay. We did actually, we were able to make some equipment purchases that we needed, but it's still, we were still on the tail end of where we were getting full financing for those at the end of last year. So that has went away. And so we're actually in pretty good shape there. The last two are very small ones. The trust fund, that's the scholarships that we make, that we have in-house, there's two or three of them. And then finally, the custodial funds were required to show, and what that is, is it's staff funds. What I mean by staff funds, it's a, you basically help me out, I think you guys do, one of you do jeans for a cause or something? Is that all right? Okay. And what it is, is they, they contribute, the staff contributes to this, and then they have the money there to pay memorials and stuff like that. And what it is, is they contribute, the staff contributes to this, and then they have the money there to pay memorials and stuff like that.
Question, Brian, that ending balance, is that a June 30, actual June 30, 2023?
And understand, that's cash, not cash.
Right.
That's not cash, that's the, I always say, it's what you own, what you owe, it's what you're worth.
Basically, your balance sheet, what your balance sheet would show. And so what is the beginning balance? What does that represent?
That was last year's June 30th. This would be June 30th of '22, this would be June 30th of '23.
Okay, so between there, it represents all the activity?
Yes.
For those accounts in a nutshell?
Yep.
Money in and out?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is a very simplified thing, which we, by code, have to do when we get the audit completed, which probably December or January, then we'll go for that at that time.
Okay.
Pages and pages compared to one night summer.
Yeah, about 72, actually.
We like that.
Any other questions? If you get a motion to approve the treasures report, it says here, yep.
So moved.
So moved by Jade.
Second.
Second by Monte. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no. So next, we're up to item E, let's see here, seven, the approval of the early retirement incentive.
Yes, so this is something that has been going on for several, several years here in Harlan. And Brian does his due diligence and looks to see through the management fund what he feels we are able to support total number of early retirements. And the reason we like early retirement is it helps us start recruiting much quicker due to all of the teacher shortages. It's been very helpful. So, and in the end, it does oftentimes save us some money sometimes because the teachers that are retiring are the ones that are making the most money. It is very similar to last year, as you guys saw. Eligibility is you have to, you have to be 55. You have to have worked at least 10 years within the district. You have to notify us, us by November 9th, and then we will bring it to you. So there's a deadline. And you have to finish the school year. So you have to continue to work throughout the rest of the school year. I don't know if you guys have any other.
Was there a number that you mentioned?
Yes, so. Okay. Brian feels that we are good with six, so up to six. Last year, I think we had up to eight, and we only had seven that actually came in and asked for it. So we can do up to six this year, the first six.
And hopefully, they know that this is a kind of a timed event where they have a certain time when they can apply and a certain time that it's closed off. I know unfortunate last week, we all felt bad last year because someone couldn't abide by the parameters of the timing on it. Is that right, Brian?
Yeah, two years ago, yeah.
Wasn't that two years ago?
It was two years ago.
Two years.
Last year.
Time flies.
Yeah. Anybody have questions? The benefits, they get a $15,000 bonus. They, we, the district will pay $125 per month towards their insurance, up to $1,500 per year. There are some stipulations in that, Brian, do you want to explain that?
The $15,000 goes into, goes into a special pay plan. And the special pay plan, it literally costs us just the $15,000 because it's, there's no FICA, there's no IFRS, there's nothing else attached to it. And to put it maybe in, when I say special pay plan, it's essentially, it's like a tax sheltered annuity. They have to, it goes into there, they are free to draw it out the next week if they want. So that's, it's their choice at that point in time. And what else do you want about the hundred?
Well, I just didn't know if you want to talk a little bit about the insurance.
Yeah, what we do then is, this is, to my knowledge, it's, this has always been attached to it. I haven't been here forever, so I, but. What they get is they get $125 per month, which is $1,500 per year to go towards insurance, irregardless if they stay on our insurance or leave our insurance. There is in the, this is written, if you would have somebody that leaves her insurance, and it hasn't always exactly been written that way, but it does say in here now, the last two years, I believe, if somebody would leave our insurance and go someplace and literally were on their spouses or whatever it may be, and they have no cost, we are not liable.
And they pay that until they're eligible for Medicaid?
A month before.
Medicare.
Month before. We have, some of them are on there for a year, and we have some of them on there for several years. And they all kind of balance out.
Yeah, I think we can appreciate the benefit to the school, yet we do lose some really good experienced teachers. That's the downside, and we appreciate these teachers that have taught for a long time. I think we'll all feel that way.
We often have, already have called them, almost all of them have retired to come back and help. So, yes.
It's no secret that I don't love this. I would be remiss if I didn't again bring up that as we go into what I believe is probably going to get worse and worse for education majors and shortages. I hope that we are looking into incentivizing coming to Harlan and retention. My premise would be, one, if you are on the bubble of retirement and this $15,000 is either what makes or breaks retirement, I think that's a pretty small percentage of teachers that would be in that boat. And I think we saw that last year or two years ago with a teacher that retired just didn't make it in time to get the early incentive versus some of those younger teachers coming in, you know, we see that maybe are having a harder time or, you know, whatever, different things. I think $15,000 could go a long way in some of those areas. It's not that I don't appreciate the early advertising portion of it, but I think we've also seen that go awry with an art teacher, if I'm correct, who we don't get him to sign a contract any earlier. So he or she was able to say, yes, I'm coming, so we didn't advertise for that anymore. And then low and behold, we didn't have that person, which I appreciate all the efforts that go into this. But as a board member, I would be remiss if I didn't say, I hope we think of these things. Or even start to, not even split, but look at some sort of scenario if indeed we continue to see the shortage of education majors. Because I don't think it's people don't want to come to Harlan. I think there aren't teachers graduating to go anywhere, let alone Harlan. So that's all, maybe for me.
So what do you think? Any more comment about that? I know these teachers that, you know, have been here and are ready to retire. That's part of the thing too, Jade, is that sometimes they want to retire. And I suppose sometimes it pushes them over, but it's probably inevitable, unfortunately. So I don't know if we're changing that a lot by this incentive program, do you think, Brian, or not?
I honestly think when somebody ready to retire, they're already retired, irregardless. But I'd also argue the opposite is, is in some ways, you kind of want to show some appreciation for those that have put in a lot of time. I mean, there's really, you can balance that out.
It's not lack of gratitude on my part. I mean, they do get a salary, and it's not a lack of gratitude. I appreciate teachers. I have seven children. No one appreciates teachers more than I do. But I think it's more of, you know, six spots at $15,000, and that's just the incentive bonus is what, $90,000? And for some younger teachers or from some teachers on the bubble of, we talked about this last year, but they're saying those years of like between five and seven years statistically when people are walking away from the profession. So what do we, what do we do to help that?
And the only real thing is, is maybe an apple and an orange a little bit because when you're talking the incentive, you know, if you took and say, okay, let's take that and go over here. This is a management fund, which is only usable for retirement or post, for retirement benefits. Over here, what you're talking about would be something general fund. So it's not exactly.
Retirement isn't the only thing that management funds can go to.
There's really basically about four uses. It's very limited. It's your property and casualty, workman's comp, that type of insurance, post-retirement benefits or retirement benefits, unemployment, if you have any, which we fortunately haven't had any for years. And then, I think, I guess I just named the three that we hit us.
So what you're saying basically is?
It's very limited use.
Yeah, you couldn't not do the retirement and then use that $90,000?
Nope, because it's in a different fund.
It's in a different basket.
It's in a different fund.
But the ratio of what we put in there could change.
Sure. You arguably could, you could arguably use a little bit less of a management levy, but there's no real way to recoup it over here if you're going apple to apple.
Sure.
We're not committed to do this next year or the following year.
Each year, each year.
Yeah, it has to be done.
But it seems to be kind of an expectation.
I wouldn't speak to that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting point. The teachers expect it. How many years has this been offered?
I honestly, I mean, I've been here, this is, I think, my 14th year. I believe we've done it just about every year. I don't think we've done it every year, but most of the years. Before that, I don't really know, Jim. I truly don't. But we've done it most years. We've ebb and flowed how much? I mean, I think there was probably years we did just, okay, we have enough for two, that's all we're going to do. And we've had years where 12 people wanted to do it, and we had a limited bidding. So it's not like everybody has benefited from it.
I think outside of the confines of where we are at in time right now, I wouldn't necessarily have these feelings toward it. It's within the confines of education is already losing people, and we are seeing teachers walk away from education at a more unprecedented rate than ever before. So my concerns are within those confines, not that I'm against teachers, that I'm against early retirement, just within these confines. I've seen how much we've worked to get where we are, and I am thankful for that, I am. But I, I just, I feel like my concerns are legitimate. And, you know, you said, it looks great for right now, well, when do they have to have their paperwork in?
February.
November.
Oh. No, November.
So I would expect six openings in November. So I just wanted to say that.
See, and I wouldn't be absolutely sure of that.
Well, last year, we had this discussion too, and I don't want to say I was right, but we did have eight people that wanted to retire early, and one just didn't make the deadline, unfortunately. We'll see, I hope I'm not right. Well, I don't think we were able to vote on it two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
No, I think we had to.
No, I mean, I don't think, I was on the board two years ago.
Last year, I don't think we filled all the openings we had. Two years ago was when there was somebody after.
Yeah, we were, I was not on the board then, so I had a vote last year, and that was when one was just late, unfortunately. So those are my concerns within the confines of this conversation are, are we making it harder on ourselves potentially?
And I don't want to say that we have to do it because everybody else does it.
Sure.
But if I recall, majority of school districts.
You'd have a hard time finding.
Do this?
You'd have a hard time finding anybody that doesn't do it.
That doesn't do it? So then, then you, then, you know, then you switch it and say, well, if the majority of the schools do it and Harlan doesn't do it, you know, then, then that's a negative impact on or situation.
I think there are some districts though, like Ankeny, I believe it is, and it might be Dallas Center Grimes, that have started some retention programs and some enticements because they're struggling heavily, they have teachers. So it's just unprecedented times, you know? If the majority of people jumped off a bridge, it's the same thing you tell your kids. Would that mean you run right after because the majority of people are doing it? So I'm just saying, my concerns are, I hope we're looking into that, especially if it gets harder. Maybe it won't, maybe it'll get easier, but that's a little hope.
And I'm really with you as far as this problem with teachers. I mean, it's just a tough, tough situation. Yet I don't know if this really ties to, you know, if you really come, Catherine would probably speak to it more than anything. What's the causes for the not having enough teachers? I don't know that this is a really direct tie into the actual cause of the problem. I mean, if we don't offer this, we're going to have a lot more teachers. I didn't know that that's a very good causal, cause and effect.
For me, it is just being able to get out there sooner and to recruit. And to also, like, I think it was Joni said, give those people that have served this community so long a little bit of incentive. I agree with Jade, it'd be great to give incentives to teachers who are coming in new. But like Brian said, it's a different pot of money. And where do you decide who you give that retention to? I think the Ankeny, I'm not sure, and I was just looking, I wonder if the Ankeny one was the new teachers that didn't get the $1,000 bonus that Kim Reynolds gave? I'm not sure, and I'm certainly going to, yeah, I'm going to research how they do it or even maybe reach out to see what they're doing because, I mean.
You are correct.
Is it? But, I mean, it's something to look into too.
Well, I think if we all have the same opinion, then there's not exactly any different thought processes that go. We don't all have to have the same opinion, and we shouldn't all have the same opinion. I just think we should express our opinion, and then the chips fall where they fall.
So, and one of the really, really good things for the Harlan Community School District is that so many people want to come home. That is a plus for me in recruiting too. I mean, it's a great community, and it speaks for itself, I think.
Joni?
I, I talked.
Monte, Joe, anything? Anyone like to make a motion, one or another?
So we, this is to approve it, correct?
Yes, if you'd like to, yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the early retirement incentive.
I'll second.
And seconded by Joe. Okay, we'll take the vote, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no?
Nay.
And so the next item on the agenda is E8, which is a policy review, schedule, reading, first reading. And I guess it's up to Joe and myself to.
I think you got really lucky whoever was on the.
The J's.
Yeah, just because so many of the policies.
No, three of the J's.
There's a lot of them.
I will say, I freaked out a little bit because this is, it's in green, which means we're adding it. But I was like, Casey, how many foreign exchange students do we have? Because we have two, and I don't ever remember approving them, having the board approve them. So that's new and recommended. So that's something we freaked out a little bit there too. So we will do that, I'm assuming they come in the spring.
They wanted to give the board more power from what we've been seeing.
But I was like, oh my gosh, I don't think we've been doing this, but we, it's new, okay. So that's, yeah. And then homeschool assistance program, which we offer with Mrs. Bachmann. And then the reconsideration committee is for just if we, if someone wants to challenge a book, then that's, this is the whole.
a book, then that's, this is the whole process to do, do so.
That's only on the first reading because we went through it last month and made changes, right?
No, this is, no, we made changes to other things. There's, see up there, there's E1. I think we made changes to the other E documents. And basically, the big change is that it, because of the legislation, it took out any parent or, or it, we're adding any parent or guardian of the current estimate.
Legislation.
Yeah, I remember that, reading that last month.
So it has to be a correct...
They have to have a child, have a district.
Yep, there's a lot of policies around.
I thought I remember reading that last month, but that wasn't a different one.
Yeah, so that's the only change on that one. And then it is, explains the whole process, who has to be on the committee, and then the instructional materials. There's a form to fill out. And then the technology, we just wanted to scratch that one piece.
I did want to ask one thing on that, and just, it's my understanding of the reconsideration is 0503E1, it says that related to learning materials. So not necessarily just be looked at as a material that's presented that's not necessarily in the library? Or is it just the learning materials?
Challenging, right here, reconsidering challenging materials?
Ah, no, it's very top of the, second, top notch, yeah.
Oh, the second reading?
No, it's just right here, the, the related learning materials, it just...
First paragraph, Joe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, first, first, it was the first paragraph. It just says learning materials, correct?
Selection of learning materials.
See, I believe the reconsideration committee was about the books, the books that are in our library, but the way that's stated is learning material. And that could be subject to what the teacher brings in or curriculum or whatever.
It's not what the teacher brings in. It's not what's in their library.
But, uh, learning material, that's why I was questioning the, the language on the policy.
There's a different policy that we just looked at, that it's not what is in the teacher's personal possession, that's considered theirs, it's not that.
I was just wondering about the language we've got in there.
Well, let's, this is the first reading, Joe, so we'll find out and...
So you're saying this is a little more general than some of the other policies are a little more specific?
Just not turning their learning material, I, I just a little bit concerned about whether or not it's supposed to be library books or...
I think it is, because I think the 605 is the library book piece, but we'll double check for you.
Yes.
Any thoughts? Otherwise, could we have a motion? Would you, if we want to approve it, and then we have a second chance at it next month? Is that acceptable? If you'd like to make that motion accordingly?
I make a motion to approve the first reading.
Okay. Second. Got a second from Joe, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, next we have the number nine, policy reviewing, review schedule, second reading.
Is there anything that we were looking to change or add?
Just a little orange in here, I believe.
Orange?
Yeah, well, orange, green.
Oh. If you're seeing orange, we should write that on here.
Yeah.
No, these are all the ones that we had gone through, and it's, it's okay. Well, indeed, they're out there.
Questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll take a motion on this second reading.
I'll move to approve the second one.
Joe, motion?
A second.
Seconded by Joni, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, next is item 10, the consent agenda. And so we have several items underneath here, the first of which is the minutes, and then the accounts payable. Any questions on this? Of course, I think I might have had one for Brian. Right there. I thought I'd ask Brian about the Peterson Family Wellness, is that pursued or...
That's the wellness program. What we do is, our agreement with them is that we, as a district, provide 10%, I believe, of, of the, and that's in budget, by the way, which is just a fraction of the, the total amount we paid. But the agreement with the Peterson Family Wellness Center is, is we have to fund the, the employees' part of it, which then we get back every month. And essentially, when you get to the end of June, it balances out. So we pre-fund the employees, and then we collect it from the employee monthly.
Interesting, okay.
And actually, we get actually 13, because of this, we get 13 months for 12, for the price of 12, so.
We got a deal. I also see that Stevens Ford, you had got a vehicle purchased, $34,000?
$34,000, that is a sped vehicle, which again, was ordered last, July or August of last year, and we just got it.
Well, we need another one too, right?
We, we're going to probably have to look at another sped vehicle. We just, we just have too many kids that we're transporting right now. So that I would expect, and we probably, because of the difficulty in getting vehicles, we probably, more than likely, are going to look used. Because you order a new one on fleet, they won't even tell, they won't even give you a delivery date now. They, they literally won't, they'll say, could be next month, it could be three years.
Was, was that vehicle new or was it used?
This was new, it was a fleet vehicle. We, we were actually, last fall, we were, let's say, we did not have enough vehicles in any way, shape, or form, and we actually went out and purchased a used minivan at that time, and, and that got us by, and we had that right away. Well, we knew we were still short, and we've got, I mean, vehicles get old, they put a ton of miles on them. So we, at that time, ordered this one, which was new, and we got the fleet price at the state of Iowa. Well, yeah, and 16 months later, we got it.
It's a, I don't know what it is. It's like a van, but it's a small van, and it's not a minivan, and it has a lot of windows.
It's a transit with, a seven passenger transit van.
It's got a lot of... It drives fine, drives like a car, but it, yeah, it can seat seven, so that's nice.
It's what I could get.
Yeah.
But we don't send two really to the same place to put them in the same car, do we?
And some, Boyce Town.
You're going to Emily Jane.
So two, just two at a time, Boyce Town. And then we do have some that like, one goes to Iowa School for the Deaf, but goes just on Mondays, and then we pick them up on Fridays. And I think that one, they, they go to Children's Square and pick up the kid too. So they, they're trying to get them together, but their start times are different, and Boyce Town is quite a ways away.
Jared does a nice job of coordinating it, that's what I will tell you. Even like on yellow buses, we've located a company that gets them in off a lease, either one or two years after on lease, and we were probably, because of the cost of new ones, we're, that's maybe what we're going to do going forward. You buy them for anywhere between 65 and 75% of new price, and they're usually, you can get them with maybe 25,000 to 30,000 miles on it, which that's probably about a seventh of their life, maybe even more than that, actually. It's probably an eighth or a ninth of their life, so you're, you're actually getting better. Yes, you're going to have to replace it a year or two earlier, but you're paying a fraction of, a smaller fraction of the price.
Makes sense. Any other questions on the numbers there, or the meeting notes, meeting minutes? Okay, could we take a motion on the consent agenda? Some moved by Bonnie.
Second.
Second from Joni, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And we come to the last item, H adjournments.
I have a question. Did you say that, that, um, Rachel, that you were, that somebody was going to talk about Rachel's challenge? No.
Tonight?
Yeah, I did not say this, I thought it was...
No, no, we, we just had it Thursday, Friday.
I thought maybe there was somebody here that was going to present it.
Gotcha.
Looking at all you guys like, who wants to talk?
Yeah, yeah.
Not me, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second?
Second.
Seconded by Joni, all those not in favor, aye.
You're saying not in favor?
Aye, in favor, aye.
You had a not in there.
Okay, Joe.
Yeah.
I just about got through it.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
We could all name.